Yeah.
Whenever you are.
Okay. We call the meeting to order at 6:35 of the City of McLennan Chisholm Planning and Zoning Commission Work Session. We want to welcome our new alternate Commissioner, Sherry London, just sworn in, and so welcome, and glad to have you with us. Everybody bow your head for a moment, we'll do the invocation and then the pledges. Father, we thank you for this day, we thank you for the opportunity to be of service to you and to the citizens of this wonderful little community that we call home. Father, give us the ability to be wise in our decisions, so that it will benefit all those citizens, and to thy greater glory, in Jesus's name we pray, amen. You join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Just an agenda item question, Carl, are there any citizens' comments that need to, or anybody would like to? Okay, did you want to take 5-2 or 5-1, Carl, first, since we have a gentleman here from MSF Group?
I think we'll do, if you don't mind waiting until we get through.
No, 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 boy, it's, I think we'll have enough.
Yeah, if you start to snore, well, I can't.
Okay.
Okay. Then, our items are for consideration, we will go to 5-1, and the city planner will do an orientation presentation, so, Carl, it's all yours.
Okay, I think you all have the packet, and it'll be on some screen, either the flickering one or the other one. Yeah, it should be in your book, the slides for this. I guess what we're really here, there's a whole number of issues that come before y'all. Probably the one that everyone knows about is zoning, and actually has some decision-making that's not out of your hands in that sense, and we'll get into Platts later, that'll explain to you. Zoning in the USA and Texas is based on, it allows cities to establish regulations. It's really from the turn of the century, and I don't mean this one, the last one, the 1900s, there were some very famous cases that cities went, Amber Reality, and some other cases where, it basically started with like, things like meatpacking plants and other things that were next to houses, and obviously that's not appropriate, and the cities and other government entities would go in and try to establish rules to protect the two uses, obviously in this case, the residential. It's always based on, or should always be based, in Texas and US laws, based on a comprehensive plan. McLennan Chisholm has a comprehensive plan, it's there in your packet that Shelley gave you. And it's based on public health, safety, welfare morals. There are some things that, that's kind of a big, broad term, and that's kind of what is public health, safety, and the morals probably not as much as the other issues are what we're here to discuss. And it's really based on, a lot of the original stuff was based on that light and air situation. Some of the early codes in New York, when you had tenement houses that didn't have light in them and stuff, they would go and regulate coverage and to allow light shafts and air into these buildings, because they were just built to just basically warehouse people in that sense, so they were really for public safety and public health issues is really where zoning got it started. Much of the sanitation laws from the turn of the last century, too, were that sort of stuff to help promote public health in that sense, more than probably worrying about aesthetics and things of that nature. So, a comprehensive plan, a comprehensive plan, basically, like I said, you have a comprehensive plan here, it establishes a vision for the city, we've had that discussion, I think, when we first, when I first started here about visions and stuff. It usually has components about transportation, land use, future land use, housing, some other standards that are in there, and those are components that are in your comprehensive plan also. It's usually written on a 20 to 25-year timeframe out there, and then there's usually five-year periods also in there, and then it usually is tried to be updated on a five-year basis. Things change in five years easily nowadays, 205 coming through, another road coming through, obviously changes, those sort of things, so you try to look at it in that five-year period, at least if nothing else, just to go, we don't need to change anything, nothing's happened, you know, that sort of stuff. So that's the update process. If you don't update it, you've got something that looks good on a shelf, and that really doesn't keep up with your city. Most cities, including McLennan Chisholm, has two basic boards, what looks at land use and zoning-related issues. You, the Planning and Zoning Commission, are appointed by the city council, you're an advisory board. You in McLennan Chisholm don't make the final decision on zoning cases or on Platts. In some cities, the Planning and Zoning Commission will make the final decision on Platts. You make recommendations to the city council. The code requires, the local government code which establishes zoning and plating regulations in the state of Texas, require that if you have, you don't have to have, but if you have a Planning and Zoning Commission or a Plan Commission, or whatever the city calls it, they have to make a recommendation on a zoning case. They cannot go to the city council without it. If you have that board established, you could not establish that board and take everything straight to the city council, but if you have that board, they have to have a recommendation from this body to go to the city council. What they do with that recommendation is up to them. For Platts, it can be set up where you can either make the final decision, or the city council can make the final decision, and you either make a recommendation to them or don't. So, that in McLennan Chisholm is set up where you review preliminary Platts and final Platts and make those recommendations. The Board of Adjustment, again, is appointed by the city council. There are five members in the Board of Adjustment, most cities have five, Dallas actually has 15 members, and there's three panels of five. It is set up, such a decision by the Board of Adjustment requires four out of five to approve something. You can deny something by anything less than four, or three to two, or tie of two to two, but that requires a three or four fifths majority, 80% majority, to approve anything in the way of a variance at the Board of Adjustment. The Board of Adjustment is a quasi-judicial board, it does not go to the city council. The appeal of a Board of Adjustment decision is to district court. So, there is a much higher standard of evidence at a Board of Adjustment, because that evidence or that testimony is then taken, if it's appealed, to a court of law, while your recommendation goes to the city council. Okay?
I have a question.
Sure.
Can I have a half a degree of interest in that, almost one time? When we've had a case here where the actions that our board can take and are approved with conditions, deny with or without prejudice for whole, for the case?
Right.
What does deny with or without prejudice, if this is a, a loan?
Oh, I was gonna get into it, I'll go ahead and do it now, no, now, Sam, you were here. Deny with or without prejudice? If you deny something with prejudice, and it doesn't mean you're, what that does, it requires then, before the applicant can come back to make another application, there's a waiting period, okay? In McLennan Chisholm, it's a one-year waiting period, in some cities, it's a two-year waiting period. So, if you deny it with prejudice, and usually what it does is, is the city, and I think that's the code in McLennan Chisholm, you have to, you deny something, or you deny it without prejudice. You don't say with prejudice, denial is implied to be with prejudice, if you don't want it. A zoning case, Platts are a whole different, but a zoning case, you know, you're almost there, guys, you know, work out something, you know, that kind of stuff, we think there's a solution, but we're gonna, so we're gonna deny it without prejudice, work on it some more, come back, that sort of situation, as opposed to, no, no, you know. A lot of times, that waiting period is put on there for a situation where developers used to just come in and just hammer neighborhoods. You know, eventually, if you showed up every month, eventually the people aren't gonna show up anymore, because you just wear them out. Well, if you denied it without prejudice, they'd come back the next day, and the next day, and the next day. But if you put a one-year, two-year waiting period, it's like, okay, everybody cool down, you know. Now, if you or the city council, if you and they don't go to the city council, or the city council denies it with prejudice, they can appeal, they can apply for a waiver of that, because something may have changed, you know, they worked it out, they don't want to wait that year, and everyone's singing kumbaya, and they come and they work it out. So there is, there is a remedy to get out of that time period, the city council can approve a waiver of that time period. That's the difference between denial and deny with prejudice. The other ones are pretty self-evident, you approve it, you approve with conditions, or you can hold it, or like we'll discuss later, in this case, the city council, being the final decision, has remanded something back to you, that's their way of saying, hey, go look at this some more. So, thank you. That's not really your decision, because you're not the final body in that sense. Okay, next page, well, you know who you are, takes the quorum and everything, you meet, can't owe any back taxes, can't owe any back taxes, you meet the third Thursday of the month, or the fourth Thursday, if we, so, I think we met on the first Thursday once, yeah. But for the most part, the calendar setup, you meet the third Thursday of the month. As I mentioned, you're an advisory board, you make recommendations on zoning changes, text amendments, if the code needs to be changed, there's a new something out there that no one ever thought of, and we want to try to put that in there, or we don't want to put that, we don't want it to be in McLennan Chisholm. SUPs are specific use permits, I think there's some reference in there, and then subdivision Platts, that's what's before you. The Board of Adjustment, I'll go really quickly on that, five citizens, takes four votes are required to approve something. Again, appeal is to the district court. They hear variances, height setbacks, we've had two since I've been here, one on a store up here about the length, remember the length of the wall discussion? One was a setback, wanted to put an accessory building setback. Probably the most things the Board of Adjustment sees are setback related issues, maybe an occasional second dwelling unit, mother-in-law kind of situation, that sort of stuff, that's usually what they see, they've, you know, they meet as needed, probably once or twice a year. The next page goes over the whole review process, and you're sort of in the middle of that process, and sort of with the plat, two different locations. Usually we try to have a pre-application meeting, so we can, we've talked some people out of zoning requests, because they, it's just not gonna work, or, or do you really want to do this, because the ramifications are, you may get the zoning, and it's too expensive to do what you want to do, do you really want, you know, we're in the business to help people, and if it's not gonna work right, we had one where it's like, yeah, you could do that, but you'd cost to renovate and bring ADA compliant and grease traps, never mind, you know, it's one of those sort of things. It looked good on paper until they dug deep into it. So that sort of is a helpful situation, and that one, we had the building official here, and we went over, remember the restaurant use up here, and it was just, it just wasn't gonna work, there was just gonna take so much improvements, that even if the zoning was approved, I'd have zoning that I couldn't ever build in that sense. So then, zoning is, we've had a zoning case here before, y'all, it's coming back again, but there's a public hearing, and I'll go into more of the zoning and what takes in that. After the zoning's approved, usually the next step is, probably some of that schematic engineering is done, just to see if it works. McLennan Chisholm's a little different than other cities, there's not a whole lot of sewer in the town, y'all know that, so that's one of those things, is this gonna work sort of situation, is the water situation different, as opposed to a larger city where you know the utilities are probably available. So that's some of the stuff that needs to be done, long probably before you apply for zoning, because again, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work, you know, you can only, you can't run sewer, if there's no sewer there, sort of situation. So, there's some schematic engineering done, some topo stuff to make sure you're not in the floodplain, things of that nature, and then we come to the preliminary plat, y'all have looked at some preliminary Platts. The preliminary plat just basically sets the boundary, this is the shape, the size it's going to be. So far, all y'all have seen are one and two lot type preliminary Platts, there hasn't been any subdivision. Subdivision will lay out streets and things of that nature, but again, it's laying it out at a, at a 2,000 or 3,000-foot level, I'll say. So, after that's done, y'all, again, make a recommendation, it goes to the city council. I think I've got some more stuff in plating here, yeah, so I won't get into the ramifications of plating and what you can review.
It's supposed to have two applications.
Oh, she just ruined my day, okay, thank you. Thank you. So, preliminary plat, again, you review, and then it goes to the city council, and they make the final decision. After that, we'll assume it's approved, then they get into full engineering and stuff. If it's a subdivision, they're gonna lay out streets, it's a large set of civil plans that are then reviewed by the city engineer, and at that time, once they get all that, because, you know, in their review, they may shift streets and things of that nature just for, for whatever reasons, drainage or other things, then they will submit a final plat, you will see a final plat, you've seen a couple of them, but then, those are those one-lot subdivisions where you're not putting in utilities or streets. You will, sounds like soon, maybe see one of those, and they'll have the full street layout, the full lot layout, and that will be instead of a, a 1,000 or 2,000-foot level, that's at the street level, that gets into precision drawings, because they're gonna be able to then, if it's approved and go through the final engineering, they'll be able to then build those streets and those subdivisions and lay that out. So, you again make a recommendation to the city council, and the city council makes the final decision. If the final plat's approved, the engineering plans are approved, then they go straight to building permit. We're not involved in building permit, y'all aren't involved in building permit, if you have the right zoning and it's planted, and you got all the engineering, and you meet the building code, they get a building permit. If they didn't need zoning and want to go to building permit, they complied, they go get a building permit. If the use is allowed, then it's not, it's out of your purview, it's out of the city council purview. Zoning allows it, the plat allows it, building code allows it, issue a building permit. That's not discretionary, that's administrative. Zoning districts, y'all have the packet, the book that you were given, which is a very well, very good book, I already had mine, Shelley did have, it has all the zoning districts and stuff, A through S, I guess, there's no Z, Z for zoning, and it gives a brief, the whole zoning ordinance gives, and what I would sort of concentrate on those, there's a use chart in there that says permitted or SUP, and we'll get into an SUP here in a minute, but I concentrate on that first sort of paragraphs of each of those zoning categories, it sort of gives you a general idea of GB, general business, gives you what's sort of allowed in there, and then if you wanted to look up a specific use, you just go to that use chart and stuff. The zoning districts establish height, setbacks, lot coverage, all those sort of development parameters, and of course, uses. Zoning regulations, as I mentioned, the next page are adopted in conformance or in conjunction with a comprehensive plan, here's all the items, again, that sort of what establishes zoning, light, air, advocate, open space, all those situations, taking into account the need for public facilities, schools, parks, things of that general nature, so that's what establishes zoning regulations. The next page talks about what the governing body can regulate, up until September 1st, there was a longer list, but after September 1st in the state of Texas, the state eliminated some of the things that you can regulate. This talks about, as I talked about, lot coverage, setbacks, population density is really the density for multifamily, things like that, or the lot size, in that sense, it regulates density, and then uses, which would be the location and types of uses and stuff, that's what zoning. The next page talks about when a zoning case, and this is what you were talking about, prejudice and how it requires, at the Plan Commission requires a majority vote, at the city council requires a different vote, if there's opposition, but that's something I'll, if we come to that, I think it's probably in there, well, if not, I'll go ahead and explain it to you. When we get a zoning case, and that's further in the process, so spoiler alert, Lisa makes up a notice, and Lisa and I make up a notice, an ad goes in the newspaper, the Rockwall paper, or if the time doesn't permit, the Dallas Morning News, Rockwall paper is the paper of choice, for real important reasons, it's a lot cheaper than Dallas Morning News, and probably more people would see it in the Rockwall paper. It's also, then notices are sent to everybody within 200 feet. Our firm produces the GIS map, and we use the latest tax records from Rockwall County. If you moved in your house last month, well, you probably aren't on those tax rolls, and it'll go to whoever the last person was, or won't, you know, it'd probably still be delivered to the house. So, the newspaper notice and the written notice, the idea is to get it to them two weeks before the hearing. In McLennan Chisholm, Lisa tries to go ahead and advertise for a zoning case, the Plan Commission and the city council hearing at the same time. It's not required to be done that way, you can send out a separate notice. Notice is required to be two weeks prior to both of those, you can send it all on one notice, or one newspaper ad, or you can do it two weeks here, and then two weeks for the city council, you can send out a similar, again, mailed notice, and then a newspaper notice.
I ask you a question.
Sure.
That 200 feet, is that set by McLennan Chis, is that state law? Because I know we've talked in the past that because of our minimum acreage requirements, 200 feet, we've had, we've had a lot of citizens come in and complain that they weren't notified, and they feel like it's their neighborhood, but they weren't notified, because it's, they're two doors down, which is more than 200 feet away, so I didn't know.
And Lisa puts out a sign, and this, I can't, the sign is still on the property at the corner up there.
Okay.
That's, that's the other way to do it. State law says 200 feet, that's the minimum.
Sure.
Many cities go a lot further, and in some cities, it's based on what type of zoning you're requesting.
Sure, that makes sense.
You know, there's, if, and I'm not advocating this, she's gonna shoot. But at, but at, but at large lots, if you went 400 feet, you're still only probably getting another four or five people, in that sense.
No, yeah.
Yeah. And again, the newspaper ad obviously covers everybody.
Well, you're never gonna make everybody happy either.
And I'm assuming you put it on your webpage, too.
Yeah.
That's not required, but, but, the requirements are, notice within 200 feet, and a newspaper ad, 10 days prior to, usually Lisa tries 14 days, I guess the newspaper ad is 14 days.
I think it's a little bit more than that, because they publish once a week, because we have to get it.
Yeah, yeah, that, yeah, yeah, so it makes it a little more difficult when they publish once a week. So again, a majority vote is required, your quorum is four, I think, yeah, your quorum is four, so you'd have to have, yeah, if you had four, a tie is no, so you'd have, if you had four, you'd have to have three or four, but that, that's just your quorum. Again, the actions are approval, approval with conditions, that we went over before, or hold the case under, and then from there, as I mentioned, it's forwarded to the city council with that recommendation. Now, I don't, I don't recall that we have it here, but, but if you went, if it goes to the city council, or when it goes to the city council, state law says that, state law says it's not a democracy, no, it is a democracy, but in a sense, I've measured 200 feet around, right? So I have this donut, 200-foot donut around my piece of property here, that, and let's say there's 10 people, 10 property owners in that area, okay, I can count 10 easier. If 20% of the land area, that's where it's not a democracy, the land area within that donut shape, okay, 20% of the land area, so one person, you could have nine people that have a little bitty slivers, and one person that's like, the whole 90% of the property, if 20% of the land area is opposed to it, then it requires a 3/4 vote at the city council, that's state law, okay? It's land area, it's not, you could have 400 people, you could never get 400 people probably, but let's say you had 10 people in favor of it, or nine people in favor of it, and one person opposed to it, if that one person, that one owner, it constitutes 20%, then, then it would then require a 3/4 vote. And then the flip side is, is the city council can authorize a hearing, they have the authority to rezone a piece of property, without really getting an application from somebody, okay? If they wanted to, we did a new comprehensive study, and we think everything on 205 should be some other zoning category, and, and to do that, the city council calls a hearing on all the property on 205, okay? I'm not advocating that, but it's in their authority, state law gives them that authority. Well, if I opposed to it, if one of y'all owned property on that, so you're now the hole in the donut, right? If you're opposed to it, then you, I'm 20% in opposition, so then on your piece of property, that would require a 3/4 vote, so it works both ways in that sense, either the donut or the hole. If either the donut is 20% of the land area is in opposition, or the hole, the hole may be just you, if you're in opposition, then that's more than 20%. It has no bearing on what your decision is, it's just a little bit of information so you know at the city council, because you'll, you'll go, well, how many people, you know, we may not even know if 10 people objected to it, because it really doesn't affect your vote in that sense. It doesn't mean it's 3/4 out of four, three out of four, which it would be three out of four no matter what, but it doesn't affect yours. That's, that's a situation that comes up at the city council, and I doubt it's ever come up in McLennan Chisholm, probably not. If nothing else, you, again, 200-foot, you've got two property owners, and the likelihood is, if those two property owners showed up, it didn't make a difference if they had 10% or 100%.
Right.
Okay. Change of zoning requests, again, gee, I think I've covered everything now on that page, except the last one, what an SUP is. An SUP is, and we have not had one of those, we talked about one, and we may talk about one on the second item. An SUP says, here's a list of 20 different uses, okay, and I'll pick just because I know it, the GB district requires an SUP for restaurant use, okay? And what that says is, you know what, a restaurant's probably a good use in this district, probably is okay, but we want to look at it a little closer. And what that means is, you need to come in, and either when you're zoning it for the GB district, or when you're coming in for a restaurant, give us a site plan, give us other information, so we can review to see if a restaurant in this situation, at this location, works, so we can look at traffic, we can look at all those things. It's saying that this use is a little different than a barber shop use or something, it has other issues behind it, you know, if it's a restaurant, do we have enough parking, is the, are the driveways in the right location, is it gonna be like, in and out up here in Rockwall, where it backs up into the, into the service road and stuff, because they didn't really have a good design on that, but you know, those are the things we need to look at, and then we decide, well, you know, a restaurant may not work here, it's in the middle of the block, there's not good access, the property's not really wide enough to get a good, we're not good with a restaurant here. So that, it's that one more level of review to see that, and then that goes through the same process in that sense as a zoning case. I already have GB zoning, but I need this SUP, you have to apply for it, you apply for an SUP, it's the same process, the same notification, it's the same everything, and what it's doing is, is we'll look at this one use or two uses, and say, in this situation, yes, it works, we just, we changed the design, we moved the dumpster somewhere else, something, you know, we did something that it's acceptable, it doesn't now affect, or, no, a restaurant's just not gonna fit here, you're in mid-block, you don't have good access, all those things, so then you could deny the SUP. But it's looking at it saying, it's not prohibited the use, it's saying, this can be good if it's the right situation, the right design, the right everything.
Do you distinguish between the use of particular restaurants?
No, no, if, you can't say, no, you could say, she asked if you could distinguish between an in-and-out versus a, I don't know, a sit-down restaurant or something. In that case, you, let me, don't, let me don't do that, let me don't say an in-and-out or something else, because, a Chinese restaurant and a Mexican restaurant or something, they're both sit-down restaurants, that, that makes no difference, you can't look at that kind of stuff. Now, if one was an in-and-out, and one was a sit-down restaurant, well, those are two different types of restaurants, one's got a drive-through, whole different traffic situation, whole different things like that. You can't say, I don't like the burger part of it, it's, there is a different use in the code about drive-in or drive-through restaurant versus a sit-down restaurant. So in that situation, you have two, you have two distinct uses, you can't say, I don't like this restaurant, you know, I had some bad food at that restaurant, no, no. No, no. Is a restaurant appropriate or not? Doesn't make it, because it runs with the land. Joe may have that restaurant, maybe Joe's Barbecue, when you approved it and you saw it, but Joe doesn't ever open it and it's Bill's Fish Market. It runs with the land. If, if the building stays the same and everything else is the same, what food they serve, what product they serve, if it's allowed, it doesn't make any difference. It runs with the land, not the person. Some cities used to have S U Ps that run with the people. That's really not a zoning, it's not a land use thing. What difference does it make who the person is? Now, if they're a bad operator, that's a whole different situation and that's, but, but if it's Joe's Seafood or Bill's Burgers, it really doesn't make any difference. The drive-through is a little different, that's a, that's a good point. In that sense, the restaurant doesn't make any difference, but it, those are two different types of use. You can't say, I don't mind a, I don't mind a nail salon or I don't want a nail salon, but I, I'm okay with a barber shop. That's still the same use. It's, it's the same type of use. You can't start prohibiting that type of stuff unless you just prohibit all personal service or all those barber shop, beauty shop, nail salon, you get rid of all of them. You can't say, I don't like lawyers. I, I, no, no law, no law office, only insurance offices are, no, it's an office use. You can't get into that much, into that detail. That's when you're getting into, you're overstepping your bounds. You're looking at uses, not, not types in the, inside the use. The next thing that comes up is a plan development district and that's what is coming back to you next week and was here before, year before. A plan development district is site-specific, rule-specific. It can fall back on other zoning categories, it can fall back on single-family. You have a lot of PEs in town that are single-family PEs. And what you're doing is you're saying, I'm writing the rules for this piece of property. You know, it's not our two acre, our two and a half acre, it's our 2.2 acre and the houses have to be this and the streets have to be this and the setbacks were this. And you may have something, you may have the next property over that has the same stuff, but the next property over is the next property over, so it's different than this one. You write, the, the rules are specifically written for this piece of property. Now, I mentioned to you, as of last September, you got out of a lot of those rules. And a lot of the rules are still in the zoning ordinance, but they're not enforceable. The state of Texas, in the last legislature that went into effect September 1st, basically took all cities out of the aesthetics business, I'll call it. There are requirements in there about masonry and brick and things of that nature. The state has decided that, that if, if the material meets the building code and the fire codes and all the other codes, if it's brick or if it's, I'll just pick masonry. If it's brick or if it's stucco, if it's hardy board, if they all comply with what the building code wants them to comply with, the insulation factor, the, the fire rating factor, if all of those things comply, I can't say I want to have masonry. I can't say I want to have brick. It's whatever complies. If metal siding complied with that, it'll be metal siding. You have that option. You can't force someone to do something. Now, if metal siding didn't comply with the building code that you have, then, then they wouldn't be allowed to do it. Yes?
Oh, question. I was hearing some people in Rockwall talk about potential ways around that, like creating a special district or something like that.
There are ways. They close a lot of those loopholes if you have an historic district. Well, historic districts are completely different than anything else. You wouldn't, metal siding wasn't in the craftsman homes that I've ever seen. So if, if there's a reason for it, there's an historic district, then you're establishing a style that's based on something as opposed to just a citywide thing. The other thing, the, the other thing, there are certain plan development districts in, in this town and other towns that establish those rules. The state said, no, no, I don't care if it was a plan development district from 19-something or other, no, no. You comply with the code today and the code says, if you, if, if brick and stucco and hardy board are all the same, the, whoever wants, they can choose whatever they want. So that avenue is closed. Now, they left an avenue that in a, in a voluntary situation, the developer can agree to do certain things in a developer's agreement with the city. So basically, they are establishing, I'll agree to do certain things and it's, it's an agreement, a written agreement between the city and the developer. It's usually called a, not enough, developer's agreement. And they, and they will establish certain things that the city's going to do and certain things that the developer's going to do. So in that sense, it's not like a deed restriction. You could still have plenty of private deed restrictions. Every subdivision in this town, most subdivisions in this town have private deed restrictions, which the city is like, good, that's between you two, that ain't us, you know? So you, you can still have private restrictions that, that you as a homeowner enforce against your neighbor. If your neighbor wanted to build something, the private deed restriction said brick and your neighbor put up sheet metal, then you're going to have to, you or the homeowner association's going to have to sue the neighbor. The city's not going to get involved with that because the city's out of the aesthetics business. So there are still some ways to do it with developers' agreements, historic districts, things of that nature. And, and obviously, in, in a situation like here with larger homes, you're probably not going to start seeing wood siding and sheet metal on the side of houses. It's just not probably going to happen, plus the fact you've got private deed restrictions. So that, that is no longer allowed in, in PEs, it used to be allowed in PEs. It's, it's still in the code. I'll be honest with you, I think come a year and a half from now, the next legislature, you know, Texas, what is, they only meet every two years thankfully, that, that it will be ratcheted back somewhere. I, I think a lot of this was, some people voted for things they may not have known, I'll just leave it like that, because there's a lot of pushback from pretty much most of the cities. Because there's, there is some, there is some reason for aesthetics. City of Dallas is not regulating any aesthetics, none.
That's apparent.
They're, they're, they're out of that business and, and they took the position, and probably so, is that health, safety or welfare? If it's brick and the, and, and stucco meets the same health, safety and welfare things, is it really, or is that really aesthetics? So the city of Dallas has taken the position always, they're not involved in that. Now, historic districts and everything else are different, so I think there'll be some, some ratcheting back, but until then, those, you're not enforcing that. If someone comes in and shows brick, then that's fine.
So how common or how difficult are these developer agreements? I mean, is that going to be something we try to?
I think we're going to see more and more of them. If the developer wants to do a PD, there's more likelihood that we might enter into a developer's agreement. If they need services from us of some kind, whether it's public safety or water or sewer and, and we're in a position to provide that, we can enter into developer's agreement and we can push for, you know, I'll give you a little of this that you need, you give me 90% masonry or whatever it is that we want out of that.
But, but again, this is not something y'all are involved in.
No, I know, I know that, no.
It's generally on the council level.
No, yeah, no, I understand that, I understand.
There, there, there are some things that, that they're like key sort of cringe words in, in the zoning business, spot zoning. And everyone thinks, well, this one little house is our two and a half and everything around us is our three and a half or something like that, that's a spot. No, that's not a spot. A spot would be is, there's a lead smelter in the middle of a subdivision, that's a spot. That, that spot doesn't fit with the rest of the spots around it. It's got to be something that's just like, whoa, whoa, wait a minute, now that just don't, that's, that's a spot. And the other one is contract zoning is, I'll give you this if you give me that.
Right.
Now, developer's agreement is a little different than that because it's usually not a trade for zones.
Right.
Okay. And so that's plan development districts. The next couple of pages are site plans. These site plans are, they're, site plans are usually done, well, obviously I mentioned S U Ps, specific use term, I can't say specific, so I just say S U P. One of those words I just can't say. So S U Ps have site plans, plan development districts have site plans. In your code and most codes, the, a plan development district can have a conceptual plan and that's what y'all had on this, this site that we're going to talk again about. A conceptual plan will show setbacks, it'll show, that's at the 10,000-foot level, here's where the driveways are going to be. And the idea is this sets out the, the big parameters. It's, it's a blank slate and I have to come back with a site plan. So, because at some point, if I don't have the right zoning, I'm likely not going to spend lots and lots and lots of money coming up with this until I know I have the right to do something that's like this. So there'll be a conceptual plan that'll say, okay, here's my setbacks, here's the maximum height I have, here's where I have extra landscaping, it's, it's a 10,000-foot level. And then they will come back with this, this is a drawing that you put in with your construction plans. You come back with that and that's, and in, and in some cases, now this is different than we'll talk about the next one, a conceptual plan you and the city council approves, a development plan, you may not see that, you know? Now, in this case, we, we talked about something else, I'll bring it up again. The idea on this was you, you would look at a conceptual plan and you would look at a development plan as opposed to just the city council. That gives it some more, and in this situation that we'll talk about, that gets more eyes looking at it. You know, I may not see something and you may see something, oh, God, I didn't even see that, thanks. You know, in that case, then there's more review, there's, there's another hearing, that sort of stuff. So in normal circumstances, you would see a conceptual plan, that's with a zoning case, but the development plan is go to the city council. So here's, here's what a site, a development plan looks like. A landscape plan is the same sort of stuff, obviously with landscaping on it. If, if, in the PD, which is usually varies the zoning, it may add more or subtract, it may be important to say, I want this landscape plan approved with my, with my zoning because I want to concentrate, everyone in the neighborhood wants these trees on this back street here because the neighborhood's over here and they're not as concerned about putting as many trees over here. Well then, I want that in my drawing, so then everyone in the neighborhood knows you got to comply with that. So in that sense, you're varying the landscape regulations, but it's something that likely that there's a reason for. You know, I got, I need 100 trees and I want to put 50 of them on this street over here because that's where the neighbors are and that helps, you know, screen them as opposed to 25 over there, it doesn't have the same effect. So in that way, you could vary the landscape regulations and then you have picture of what it's going to look like. In some instances, there's elevations involved. Now, nowadays, elevations would, would, may have different colors on it, but it might not be materials, but elevations can also show articulation. Those are things that are still allowed because you're not saying what the material is, you're just saying, I don't want a flat wall. You know, I want some articulation, up or down or left or right, in or out, I want entrances to be prominent. A lot of your code and on that sort of stuff in here is, is what's called form-based code, where it relies more on what it looks like, the environment it creates versus the use of the height and the density. In this case of form-based, there's, it's a three-part construction. You have a base, base is meaning right at the bottom, but you have like the first floor is a base or, or a wainscote is a base. Then you have the meat of the building and then you have a cornice or a top on it. And that's, it's called three-part or tri-part design. Those are all still legal to use because they're not saying it's got to be brick or it's got to be blue or it's got to be something. It's just saying a style. You, you can dictate style, you can't dictate what the materials are to make up that style. So that's some of the things that we talked about in, in, in this other case, that those things are still allowed for you to do. Now, yeah, developer's agreement, then that's to get into what the materials are, but your code still allows you to say, I don't want a building that's 50, 100 feet long unless at some point in there it goes back and forth like this, I get some shadows, I break it up, I change the material. I'm not saying what the material is, but I changed the material in that 100 feet, so then I don't have a monotonous building. So those are things you can still do and that's why elevations are shown in this case. You're likely not to have a building this big here, but, but there's still some things. You know, some of the things that, that he'll probably show you tonight, show those type things where you're breaking up that facade. So I don't have a 200-foot-long building because a 200-foot-long building can either be a Walmart or it can be a downtown with a bunch of shops and it's the same length or something. And it's like two different buildings even though it's the same, maybe the same length. And you'll see even some Walmarts now where cities have forced them to break up that plane when in Rockwall, no. The one in other places, in other places where they've broken it up, you've got this part of the building is, is one material and it pokes out and another, and you have some of that roof articulation. Those are things you can still do and those, those get you past a, a long monotonous building. That's some of the things that, that I want to talk, talk to you about when we get those type of situations. And fortunately, the one today, you'll see, I think you've done a really good job of it. Okay. Plating, that's really probably what you do more than anything else and the thing you really have no control over. Sorry. State law considers plating an administrative function. Some cities don't take half their plaits, if any of their plaits are legal, the city plan commission or city council. Most cities, and I've done a survey on that, most cities McLendon-Chisholm size take their plaits to city council and plan commission. Cities the size of Rockwall and stuff like that don't, because the city council's got an agenda that's that long and they don't want full plaits. And to be honest, again, there, if it complies, it's not you may, you shall approve it. So a subdivision divides land, you can preliminary plat, final plat, a replat, which means I already had a plat and I'm changing it, moving a line or something. McLendon-Chisholm, we have a conveyance plat so that we can, you can convey property and then everyone, taxing authorities, everyone knows what it looks like. A lot of cities don't have conveyance plaits. In McLendon-Chisholm, you can't sell by, no, you can't sell by meters and downs if it's a certain size. Five acres, you don't have to plat. Yeah, over five acres, you don't have to plat. If the one lot is, if you have five acres divided into two or three lots, then yes, you have to plat. But again, we review plaits, the engineer also reviews plaits, but just on a very small level for preliminary plaits because we're not into engineering yet on preliminary plaits. We will make a recommendation, the planner will make a recommendation to you. Again, if it complies, we likely did not bring you a plat that's recommending for denial because we were told and we're going to recommend denial and they tried to fix it before it comes to you. You can deny plaits, but it's got to be, because it doesn't meet the technical requirements. There are some requirements that, that Lisa and I are going to be working through, some timing requirements that we need to work through. There are some state requirements on how soon a plat gets to you. It hasn't come up as an issue here, but we need to sort of resolve those. Plats are supposed to be, when they're submitted, are supposed to be heard within 30 days or they are deemed approved, no matter if it's just on a napkin and, okay, napkin would work. If, if the application is accepted and complies with the rules for accepting an application, the, the body needs to, needs to make that decision within 30 days. I believe, and depending on his opinion, then, then you get another 30 days to go to the city council. So I, we may or may not have to change rules, but you will get a plat within 30 days. We don't send out notices unless it's a residential replat, and we haven't had any of those. Like I say, a residential replat means I'm taking this lot that's already plat and I'm dividing it, I'm changing it. That means you send out notices to the property owners surrounding. Otherwise, again, plating is an administrative function, it's on the agenda. Since the code in, in McLendon is set up, you review it, you forward it to the city council, the city council reviews it. It's kind of a rubber stamp, it's administrative. If it complies with the rules, you shall approve it. If it doesn't comply and they want to bring it forward, we'll tell you. It doesn't comply, then you get the honor of denying it. But you have to, there are some rules about denying, that say you have to say why it's denied. It doesn't comply with this section of the code as opposed to, I don't like it. You can't deny it because, if it didn't meet the, the size of the lot or the, that sort of stuff, you can deny it because that doesn't comply with the code. But if it's like, I don't think there should be five lots there and it still complies with all the zoning and everything else, then you really can't deny it. That may be, there's some different examples of what plaits look like. There's a lot of technical stuff on the plat that shows up, owner's certificate. After, after you approve it, let's say a preliminary plat, the city council approves it, they'll do more engineering, they provide us more data, the engineer will then get involved in a review. Then you will see a final plat, which will have more of the owner's certificates on it. If you approve that final plat, it then goes to the city council, they approve the final plat. Then if it's a subdivision, that's when they're going to get all their engineering done and all that sort of stuff. And then once it's approved by both bodies and the engineering and everything's done, then it's ready to be recorded, the city, the mayor signs it, Lisa signs it, I guess the mayor signs it, yeah. The mayor signs it, Lisa signs it and then it's recorded. Okay? I guess that's plaits and I'm done in, yeah, 30 years. I guess that's plats, and I'm done in, you have 30 years of my knowledge in less than an hour. I probably got a little bit left over, but she don't want to hear it. So any more questions? And, and, and I think, if, I think, do they have my email address? If not, she can give you my email. If you want to email me, not as a group, no group emails, remember, you just took that over me. No group emails, no group emails. Do not reply at all. Oh, it is, it is on there, yes, yes. If you got some weird question about, more about this than specific cases and stuff, because it's best, it's best, if you have about a specific case, is maybe you go through Lisa, and then we figure out a way to sort of give all that explanation everybody, as opposed to one person. That's how I usually think it's best to do it.
Can I guess, so for, for, for my takeaway, kind of a 10,000-foot view here, convince that down. This body is recommendation-only. So our main purpose then is to, when, when someone comes to us with a development, you've already gone over and making sure that it meets all of the zoning requirements. Lisa's department goes through and makes sure that the city has all of the proper tools, if you will, to kind of mold that development in, in, to giving the city council the tools to mold that development if it moves forward, right? So by the time you bring it to us, all we're really here to do is to kind of make sure that it, it fits our form and then pass those tools and those decisions on to city council when it's really their decision, it's not ours.
I, I don't see it as that way, as I see it as, and, and when you get into larger cities, and I don't think Dallas is large, although it is definitely in Dallas large, but even cities smaller or larger than this, and, and it should be in your, your jobs too, I think, is you have the opportunity, you have two things on your agenda, they have 25 things on their agenda. You have the opportunity to review this, look at it, ask the questions at a hearing, talk amongst all of us, you know, like I say, I might go, well, I never thought about that, you know, this is, you know, you learn, hopefully we learn something new every day. That you then, you, you are in charge of vetting that, vetting my recommendation, vetting their requests, the applicant's requests, and coming up with what you think is the best recommendation to the city council, not to rubber stamp them or rubber stamp me, is you're there to ask, ask those questions, what-ifs. You know, because, because you have a different, you live here, I don't live in McLean, I live in Raleigh. I'm close, but I'm not here. I drive through here a lot, but, but you live here every day and you know those things. I don't know that, you know, there's a hard time turning left on this street here. Well, that's the stuff you bring to the table, that you bring that information to, that you may live somewhere nearby there, or you may go through that intersection every day and no one on the city council does. So you bring that perspective and you bring that background and that knowledge that then molds between the five, four, five, alternate six, seven of y'all, that then comes up with a recommendation, so that you're doing the heavy lifting for the city council. You're the one, when the neighbors show up for the first time and go, that's a good idea, let's see if we can put that in there, you know? So then if they have a problem with, you know, it's, it's, they're asking for 35 feet, we're okay with 30. Okay, you've, you've pulled that out of them and say, we'll make a recommendation of 30, and they'll go, well, then I don't have a problem with it now. So you've taken the heavy lifting away from the city council, that's how I see y'all, is y'all are going to be at the time, is you can, they're looking at 25 items, you're looking at one or two items, you can look at this item and go, how about this? And you can ask the developer that question, and you can ask the neighbors that question, because, oh, it's too tall. Well, is 30 feet okay? Yeah, that's okay. Is that okay with you, developer? Yeah, that's okay. So you've then gone, I've solved that problem. Everybody's good, no one's asked to ask that question, and you go to the city council and go, you know what, we're recommending 30 feet, and I can say, well, came up in the hearing, everyone's okay with 30 feet, so I, yeah, we'll go with 30 feet. So I, I see that as your job is the, is the, the background sort of, and I don't have any lifting, but you're what I mean, is you're the ones coming up with like, well, let's see if there's, let's see what the problems are, let's see if there is a compromise. If there's no compromise, you say, well, you know, no, we ain't going to get there. They don't want it, I don't care if it's 10 feet tall or 100 feet tall, or if it's, I'm going to say blue or black or whatever it is, the neighbors, and, and we don't want it, doesn't fit the comprehensive plan, it's just not right. Well, okay, fine, but, but that, you're doing that lifting to find that out.
So just to understand protocol then, because I, I understood that too. So from what I understand with this particular development, it went to city council, it was pushed to planning and zoning, we did that, we heard citizen comments, we asked the what-ifs, we did all of that, it wasn't approved, it went to city council, that's our recommendation. Now it's back to us again, so what is that protocol? How, how often can that go? Because I understood that when we submitted to city council, at the end of the day, like you said, it's their decision, we didn't, we didn't approve it, but they have the override ability to say, we're still taking it, or we're accepting, but yet it's back to us. So I, I guess I'm just trying to understand the process a little bit clearer.
Well, obviously, they're in charge, so they can send it back to you, hey, you got it wrong again, try again, you got it wrong again, try again, they can keep doing that.
But they can override us.
And they could, and they could, they could override you. That, that's, but, but in this situation, they feel some things have changed, and they would like y'all to look at it again, to see if you think those changes that were made to it, and, and we can talk about it in a little while, but, and if they don't bring it up, I can bring it up, but, but they feel there's some changes that were brought up at their hearings, and they had one or two or three or something, that, that it would be best for y'all to look at that and y'all to weigh in on those changes to see, because all of a sudden, it may be that aha moment, it's like, oh, okay, well, if we'd have seen that the first time, we'd have been okay with it, you know? That's, that's what they're, they're looking is to say, okay, there's, something has changed. We've, the city council feels something has changed here, here's what's changed, what's y'all's opinion on it now?
And I'm just going to say it, and I don't want to hurt anybody's feelings, and most of you are new, and it's very understandable, but I'll be honest, at that last meeting, the train went off the track, and we started talking about things that really weren't related to the use. And I was concerned, and I talked to Carl, and I talked to Commissioner Rhodey a little bit, I was just concerned that maybe you based your decision not so much on the use, but some, on some other things besides just the use. And I think things got real confused. So council kind of felt like maybe it warranted just another look. And this council really depends on P and Z, so I know most of it is new right now, the material looks foreign to you. Over months and months and months of doing this, especially as we get busier and we're about to, because I know two more phases of Sonoma Verde are about to walk in the door tomorrow, so we're going to start having more meetings, and there's going to be more in-depth looks at things. Your eyes will start getting used to it, and you'll start looking and, and the plans will start making a little bit more sense, and the terminology will become more familiar. Nobody expects you to know it right out of the gate. So you're going to rely heavily on Carl and staff reports in the beginning, and your input is always welcome, of course, but as you, as you, months and months pass, maybe you get a reappointment to the board, you get more comfortable, things become a little easier, a little bit more clear.
So, I don't know how to put this, if, if we just continue to deny, what, does that leave us open to, what does that leave us open to? I mean, the, the developer for whatever piece of land owns that land?
Well, the zoning is always discretionary, so you always have the, the right to turn zoning down if it doesn't meet the comp plan, you know, what's compatible with the comp plan, or if they're not changing the comp plan along with the zoning to, to make that match, or you feel there's something that's just out of place and it just would not work there, you can always turn zoning down, you can recommend denial. And like Carl said, on the plats, it's more administrative, that's just one of those things that if it meets the technical requirements, you pretty much have to approve that one. But the zoning, you have discretion.
You know, at some point, we get into that denial, denial without prejudice kind of stuff, there's a time limit involved in that. But if you don't, if you deny, and, and you being, you're not the final body, but if the city council denies without prejudice, they can come back the next day and apply. If they deny with prejudice, there's that, that waiting period, that cooling-off period. But otherwise, you know, you're, you're recommending body, you're not liable for any of your decisions in that sense, because you could say yes, and the city council go, what were those people thinking, why'd they say yes? Or you say no, and what were those people thinking, why'd they say no? And they're the ones who make the final decision. Yours is a recommending.
We, we did have a lot of dialogue, you're right. I know for me, my vote was singularly on the use, and especially seeing it spelled out so clearly, number 10 in the comprehensive plan, our responsibility is to promote new businesses that are viable and responsive to the needs of the community. And when we were asking the, the team here, you know, I remember vividly, you know, asking, what's the strategy on bringing in those tenants and getting a shard of the shoulder? So for me, my vote was very much about the lack of viability or sustainability for this community and the usage of that property. So again, I, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand the process, because my understanding was we, we did make a very informed decision, and if there's suddenly more information, I guess I would be confused why that wasn't submitted originally. That goes back to number four, and your proposed, in your presentation here, must be based on a comprehensive plan, public health, safety, morals, general welfare. So if the story keeps changing, what are we actually assessing on? So I just, if there's more information, why wasn't it presented initially? I guess that's my question.
I think, I think also we felt that, that we were kind of rushed and, and was asked to approve something that was ambiguous at the time. Rather than taking, y'all taking the time to present a complete package, you know, we were given this saying that, that when, from, from our meeting, the city council's meeting, it was a completely different project. I mean, there was drawings, there was, you know, plats, there was landscaping, there was all these things. And, and I, you know, I, I tend to agree that, you know, if you're going to set something to us, make it complete. Don't, don't try and jam this thing through us and rush it down. And I, and I think staff, you know, I think you guys should have said, whoa, 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 you know, there's so many ambiguous things here, instead of, okay, we have a meeting, got to get this thing in. You know, require the developer to, to make those decisions. It's costing them the extra time now that they had to come back. You know, Carl, it, it, you know, it almost like you, you, you expected us to, to just to rubber stamp staff recommendation without, without, no, without having a complete viable plan. And, and we look rather incompetent when the developer comes to city council, he has all these bells and whistles and all these pretty drawings, and, and, and the plat, which is, which is very aggravating, was completely different from what we saw to what was presented at city council. And Carl, that shouldn't happen. They, wait a minute, they should see the same thing at city council that we do.
And, and that's the reason they sent it back to you, because that information was provided to them and not provided to you. So it came after, it came after your meeting, so then it was, then they presented it to Sonao.
That's my point. Why force us to do this without the complete stuff?
And we were not the first ones they came to. They'd already been to the council, they already had awareness of what was needed to come to us. So for me, it's just, it's really an issue. I, I, I'm going to stand by the statement of morals. It is an issue, you are either full of integrity coming to the table with your full presentation to all bodies that you need input and approval from, or you don't come to the table. And I just, I feel very strongly that, that we were set up inappropriately, and, and I looked at this table, because again, it went to the council, direction was given, council bounces it back to us, so now they know they need to be prepared, great, awesome, they're getting that opportunity. They come to us with a completely ridiculous packet that, and I, I will beg to differ, our vote was based off of the usage that they were able to articulate to us at that point, or more importantly, lack of, and the viability of that to sustain our community. And then suddenly, we deny it, and, oh, okay, well, now let's go back and we'll present to the council and look at how pretty this is. It, it just, we look like small-town politics right now, and I think that's ridiculous.
The confusion on the preliminary drawings, the ones that were presented at council and not P and Z, may have been my fault. So when things didn't go, the package was complete in that it met all the requirements as far as submittal. So there was a concept plan, there wasn't a plat, but there was a concept plan that just sort of laid out what the general look of that development is going to look like on the corner. It did not have all the pretty drawings that were presented at council, because you all seemed a little bit confused, and I thought, at that point, I said, I think it would be a great idea if you could come up with some drawings before you get to council, because it didn't seem to be enough to, to satisfy what you needed to look at, so I thought it would be helpful.
Lisa, I guess I'd agree with you on that. We should, staff should request that, that city council see the same thing that planning and zoning saw, so they understand why we made the decision we did. We look inept.
They, they did see the same thing. Their document material can't.
They did not see the same thing.
Their document material can't contain the same stuff yours did.
No, it didn't.
Just, just the preliminary drawings were added.
It had all, it had all kind of drawings and everything else.
They, they added their material to that.
Okay. I'm hearing two different things when we talk about use. And so, one, one thing, you know, in the, in the zoning regulations, use is talking about, you know, it's retail, it's, it's a bank, it's a daycare facility, it's an ambulance, it's an amusement, it's auto impound, those are use, use, uses, right? And the big, long chart has which use is, is acceptable for which district, or for which zoning designation. So that says what it can be used for, and what I see happening here is that when it comes to, to the zoning, complying with the zoning regulations, that it has the right setback, it has the right buffer, it has the right parking, it has the right technical specifications that conform to that use, and that the use, you know, the building is going to be used for the acceptable uses that are in there. They don't necessarily need to know if it's a nail salon, or a vape shop, or a donut store, but just that these are the kinds of uses that are available, and this is what the building looks like. So, so as far as I could see in the regulations, we don't have a lot of say over what moves in there, and that our decision is based on, does it conform to the uses that are in our zoning regulations? And does, by, by, by virtue of the building itself and how it's laid out, and the use that essentially will get an occupancy permit once they want to move in.
And I agree, and I agree exactly with what you said. However, what we were presenting was lacking in those things.
In those details, okay?
They were lacking in the details. It was, it was conceptual, it was, well, and we had, we had, we had, we had questions, and, and ours a response that we got, okay, it's, we, when we asked the question, it was our intention, that's, that's ambiguous. We heard staff say, up for debate. That's, that's, that's ambiguous. We, we were not given detailed information. That's why I think the majority of the commission voted against it, because we didn't want to put our, our name on something that's our intention or up for debate.
Carl, you were being asked to approve the zoning change from general business to the planned development district. And again, there are elements to this of viability, viable and responsive to the needs of the community. I have not been presented with anything showing that there's been a market analysis of the demographics of our community. What are the market needs for our community? How are, how is this physical building supporting our community? How is it bringing revenue into our community? Again, I recognize that those are pieces that are outside, but when we're looking at that we are here to help promote new businesses that are viable and responsive to our needs, those are elements that need to be presented. I, I still haven't seen anything that supports that. That shouldn't even come here. They're not presenting us information, and if this is the information you have, I stand firm on the decision I made before, it's not well thought out. That is where I am at. That is where I am at. And so, again, these are the elements you're telling us, and we've just gone over this again, of what our role is. I think we're pretty comfortable with our role. But we're going to hold everybody from that table to this group, to the folks that are coming in to present to us, as well as our citizens that take the time to come talk to us, everybody accountable for what they're sharing. And we're going to take all of that in for what they're presenting at face value. Because that's what we have to assess on. And to have something so, so differing, I can't wrap my head around why that was allowed. I really can't.
I guess I'm confused. The only, the only thing that was different were those preliminary drawings that were supplemental. The packet itself was the same.
But to your point, you felt it was that we were so off course, where again, I genuinely don't feel like that, that it was so significant. And you said the council felt there was so much more information presented that hadn't been shared to us, Lisa. That's why when I asked, why did this come back to us? You said significant more information had been presented to the council. And I'm looking at Councilman Doll because I appreciate you being here, but as a representative of that meeting, that there was such significant information presented to them that we had not seen, that it almost mandated that it come back to us. My words. But you said there was so much information. Now you're saying, oh no, the only thing was this plaque drawing.
Just, just those supplemental drawings, that PowerPoint presentation? That was the only thing that was added?
It was not. It was a conceptual plan. That's the packet that we got. It was a conceptual plan. It's not a supplemental drawing or anything that you just said. And when we come, when they bring it to council, you know, I don't have the council packet, but it was a lot more than a, than this. I mean, this is all, this is all that Paul.
And again, they provided that information for the council packet. It wasn't available for your packet.
So why, so why was not council said that this is the only thing that P and Z had?
They do aware of that.
Would council have approved?
Could they have approved that? Sure.
You don't know that. You're assuming they-
No, no, I said, you asked, could they have? Yes, they could have.
Well, would they have-
But they didn't want to.
I don't know about would.
If they would have said, if they would have had the same information that we had, which is this, and I brought this up at the city council meeting. All we're asking is that if a developer is going to present to P and Z, that the information that they present to us, what we make our decision on is what they present to council. Is that so difficult?
No, it's not. And the situation came up was it changed? And the city council said, you know what, it's changed. We want you to have a chance to do that. They didn't have to, they obviously could do what, they're in charge, they could-
Don't you think we might have rushed this a little bit before we had all this stuff?
No, I don't. We provided you the information we had.
And in a judgment, you think it's conceptual plan or not?
In the interim, more information came and was provided to the city council. I can't prohibit him from providing them information. So the city council said, you know what, we got more information.
Didn't you ask them to provide us that information as well?
It came after the fact, so if I asked you to do it, it's already gone, you've already made a recommendation.
That's the thing, it's after the fact, Mark.
Well, it's back to us now. It's back to us now.
It's back to you now, that's when the city council decides, you know what, this came after, you had already looked at it. We want you to review it.
Let's go on to 5-2. We've been talking all night. Let's go on to 5-2. Agenda item 5-2, review and discussion only. Boarding request by Mohammed Palani on behalf of MSF Group LLC requesting zoning change request from general business DP to plan the element BD for general business on 1.5 acre tract. And he lays up survey, rock, sand, property IDs on 1.2. Generally located at the South Palm, level 550, State Highway 205. No action, we'll be taken. Discussion is in preparation for a zoning change request of consideration during the RISZ Commission meeting on February 27th, 2020. It includes a staff report as well as preliminary building drawings.
This one good?
Thank you.
This is an opportunity for dialogue between the board and the applicant, so.
Okay, David, you want to go start with it?
Okay. On this conceptual plan, oh, my name is David Zapata. I'm the project architect for this, for this development. I was, I'm working with Mr. Palani and his group to initially come up with this concept of what we can do with this 1.5 acres, how we can maximize retail versus parking and comply with the setbacks, comply with the landscape buffers and see where we could access the site based on the, you know, on the proposed easements on the, to the south and the entrance from 205 to the north. We've gone through several plans and whatnot in order to get our ratios to match as far as building area versus parking and see what size of building we could actually do on the site. And this is our initial, this is our initial drawing. By no means, this is final. This is, you know, we still need engineering, we still need landscape development. We still need infrastructure in the site. But what we wanted to do here is to see what size of building we can build based on the requirements set by the city. So, you know, what we want to do is, is what type of questions you have or concerns for something like this that, you know, we want to pursue. And I know it's from GB to PD. The only thing here, yes, we could go GB and just build what GB requires, but, you know, we want to do, I think it's viable to do a restaurant and more of a sit-down restaurant. And that would require a PD. And that's basically all we're asking, you know, from a GB to a PD. I think that if we just strictly went with GB, I think we'll still have the same, you know, we have to go through the same flow as far as the process of parking counts and access and compliance. We're just adding another element to this development to gain a restaurant, a sit-down restaurant with an exterior patio due to the shape of the, of the, of the site that just kind of lends itself to put a patio there at the corner, at the very pie shape of the lot. Now, do you have any questions concerning the layout or use? Or, you know, right now, we don't know who's going to rent it, who's going to be the tenants, but we do have a list of restrictions that we can, we can follow from the D restrictions. And we don't know who's, you know, we have an idea of what we want. But, you know, I can't tell you right now, we're going to have 1,800 square feet of this or 1,500 square foot of this, and, you know, we have no idea yet. You know, this is, this is very conceptual. And the drawings kind of show is what could be, okay? This is not set in stone. This is, you know, you see elevations, you see the drawings, you see the perspectives. It just kind of want, what we wanted to do is just give you a better understanding as to what it could be and what it would look like. Because we kind of felt at the last few meetings is, everybody's, well, what is it going to do? What is it going to be? What, you know? And we decided, well, you know, let's, let's show what a building of this size can look like based on the requirements set by, by the city.
I have some questions about that.
Sure.
And I apologize, I was not at the last meeting.
The only thing I would point out that, if this were a GB district, not a PD, you can't have a building that long, limited to 80 feet. Now that said, I think that's what, 175 feet, 280 foot, you know, with some spare change. You could obviously put a five-foot gap between those two and then you have two buildings. The restaurant use would have required an S and P. But again, that's, you know, they could have come in with that restaurant use and then y'all would have reviewed, is a restaurant appropriate here? Is the site, all those things that we just talked about. Use wise, their restrictions are more restrictive with what Brookshires put on the property. Brookshires crushed the property when it came to retail. You can't compete with anything Brookshires does. Brookshires does a lot. Groceries, drugstore, gas, florist, bakery. There's a lot of things that, that Brookshires just put on their private restrictions that basically limit a lot of what they can do. Office uses, things like that Brookshires does, new offices. Think about Brookshires, big Brookshires and what they do and they just wrote all that stuff out there. And then some other uses that you wouldn't do there. Some auto related, you know, bodies, you know, that kind of stuff that you wouldn't do there. So that's just where I wanted to go. The difference between where GB today, GB today is, this is a very restricted GB by Brookshires. And then the big difference, commercial or the commercial development standards today, and you're talking about an 80, an 80-foot maximum and the maximum for a one-story mini building is 6,000 square feet. So you could have two 6,000s, we'll say, with a five, actually be a 10-foot gap because the fire codes require a 10-foot gap. But you could do that there. The restaurant would require an S and P. Parking wise, there's some other restrictions about it, about in your commercial stuff. And it still would have, and we never wrote out any articulation stuff. All those things that I mentioned to you that's on page, that's not even on the page. But in the commercial development standards, it's got some drawings and that sort of stuff. Those are all still in place, GB or PD.
So just to understand the process too. This is the conceptual plan.
Right.
And in order for this PD to get made, an ordinance actually has to be drafted. So it's conceptual plan that gets approved and a detailed plan based on the conceptual plan that was approved that gets approved and then an ordinance gets drafted. So this is an iterative process?
Well, the conceptual, let's go down the path. The conceptual plan is approved and there will be an ordinance at that time with the words, all the words on it. And I can't be over certain high and all those things in a PD are written at that time. Then a development, that's approved. The ordinance is approved, they have zoning in place. They still can't get a building permit because it's a conceptual plan. Then they come back with a development plan. This one, as I mentioned, is written such that the development plan comes to you and goes to the city council. That's when you get into that drawing that shows the articulations and the, all the little stuff, all the bells and whistles. So this would be, this gets you, this is by 10,000-foot level and then they come back the next day, the next year. They come back with the, here's the 50-foot level. And that still has to be approved for the building.
And so, a couple more questions for you as a city planner, and pardon my ignorance. But so, assuming it gets done, how long is this approval good for? So say it all gets approved and there's a detailed site plan and then everybody blesses it and then the property sits vacant for another 10 years. Is there a development timeline that once it gets approved, it's got to be put in?
No, no. There are side-by-side zoning stuff, there are developer agreements that might be in place that usually have time.
Okay. And then the other question I had, and probably I answered it already in my question, but that if a developer gets everything approved and he's midway through his building and he's, and for whatever reason runs out of money, is it a performance bond or something to finish this? Or what keeps it from being a blighted property that's halfway done?
That was actually in the developers agreement that we've kind of been working on back and forth as well, was a performance bond.
Okay. And I know it's not-
But there wasn't a development agreement. There are building codes and fire codes that at some point, the city might have to step in. Let's say you got halfway through and it's just a hazard, right? The city, the city would have to step in in that case if he's gone. He's gone. All day ourselves, I-30. But let's just, you know, all the apartments are half-built and stuff. The city could step in and demolish it, do whatever it takes to make it a safe location. Then they would put a lien on the property to recoup their investment. But that's, if your neighbor started a house, it's the same situation. And they didn't.
Just make sure the city and the citizens aren't left hanging if something doesn't happen.
In that case, if the city had demolished it, yeah, they'd be looking for that bill, but they would then have a lien on the property.
Right, okay. Those were my questions. And then one comment for the developers on the site plan. You're going to need more dumpsters. I mean, just driving by a Starbucks has got one dumpster like that. This is a lot of buildings and not a lot of dumpsters.
Right.
Trash can comes every day.
And that's part of the development.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, right now, we show a dumpster because we intend to put a dumpster. Whether it's going to be a single dumpster, a double dumpster, you know, or maybe two separate ones, you know, that is further, further down the line.
Yeah, there's more areas and stuff like that. If you have a restaurant, it's got different, all different scenario of trash than a-
So that would be detailed site plan levels?
Yeah, that would be-
Right, that'd be-
And also pick up once a week. We can do twice a week or three, four, four times a week. So I've seen a lot of restaurants in the shopping center, they pick them every day. The dumpster picks every day, so it could be six-
That's really not, not for y'all per view or anything else to discuss. That's not a zoning issue. It's not a zoning issue. If, if, if the sewage is vaporized by lasers, it's not really a zoning issue for y'all. It may have, oh.
It's not a bad idea.
No, I get that. If I do work in the school district, schools are now requiring to put in storm shelters and they're looking at retrofitting and they have toilets that, storm shelters have to have toilets for schools, then it's a non-plumbing system. But that's not a issue for y'all, let me discuss that. Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, because, because, you know, could it be done in a second? I don't know if it could. The thing crosses trees. So it obviously works. I think it works good. But no, that's not. How, that's an engineering situation that if all of a sudden it never got solved in one way or another, secondly, whatever, they may, they've got a lot of zoning and they can't build it because they can't engineer it to work.
I still have questions. The 30-foot easement that you guys are showing, do you own that land?
No.
So have you talked to that land owner?
That is part of the overall development.
Yeah, that's an accessory to the city plan.
Is in place already, yes.
It is in place already, okay. And then, my other questions are related to 550 and 205. Have you all talked to Text Dot at all, or seen the plan?
No, not yet. Not yet. I mean, we tend, as far as, more important one is 205, you know, and, and we kind of show a diesel lane to enter the, the site. No, and we haven't talked to Text Dot, and that's our next, next line of process as we further go into this.
Well, I know they're widening 205. I design highways for a living, so this is what I do.
Right. They're keeping, keeping the south.
Except for at the intersections.
What's that?
Except for at the intersections.
Right, right.
So I know they're taking right-of-way along FM 550.
I actually did send it to Text Dot just to make sure that the right-of-way was correct on here.
And are they going to approve, are they going to approve that entrance 200 feet from the intersection?
I can't tell you that part, I know.
Because that's the other thing I would worry about.
So that the lot size is correct.
And I know that's not, I know that's not in our wheelhouse to decide.
Well, no, it is, no, it is. It is, um, I don't think the diesel line is going to get.
I don't either. I don't either.
That's the intersection, that's, that would be a massive.
Yeah. I mean, Sonic has an entrance, so.
Looking at, in a, in a perfect world, and looking at their manual, which means nothing, except that if it doesn't comply, then they can't get it. It would comply for that driveway there. Obviously, right in, right out, because there's lighting, it would be immediate.
There's, there will be immediate.
Uh, because of left turns and everything. But, but let's say Text Dot says, no way, no, I'm not going to ever give you that. Well, then, then they couldn't comply with their concept plan, and you know what? The only way to admit their concept plan is to come to y'all and to the City Council. You know, because, because that, you know, if, if all of a sudden, the concept plan showed 11 spaces there, and it's 12, that's, that's what, that's the devil of the detail. Driveway versus no driveway, all the access, that's, wait, that's, that's kind of altering the basic relationship kind of here. But if, until Text Dot.
Right. But I think.
Lisa can say, I want that, and Text Dot will say, good, Lisa. You can have it, watch it.
But I do think, I mean, I do think a right-in, right-out is probably your likely scenario, because there will be immediate in that intersection.
Right, right. And, and that's what I anticipate, you know, there's going to.
So that you're, you're prepared for that.
Right in, right out.
You're okay with that, yeah.
Yeah, but, but as I mentioned though, if all of a sudden, Text Dot says, no, you get no entrance, then I would, I would say that in my opinion, and then I thought the code would back me up, that's, that's changing something pretty drastic to conceptual now. If, if, if it went from 12 spaces to 11, then that's.
I would agree.
Yeah, that's, that's not a deal. Also, the, the egress changes, that's something. Or if all of a sudden, they go, two egress points somewhere else, or something going 550 instead of that egress, that's the whole different man.
Yeah. But then, and I would just encourage you to check their plans for 550, because I do believe they're taking right-of-way along 550, right there at the intersection.
All right.
Did you have some more stuff to mention?
David.
Do you want to get through the other drawings?
Want to see more of the drawings?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, if you, you know, if you want to. And, and here we kind of show, you know, except for how much land Text Dot is, is going to occupy, it just kind of show how much green we really have on this corner, based on where the location of the property line is in relationship to the, to the, to the existing curb lines.
And if I can inject, one of the things that, that we put in the PD, children's objectives, things like if there is a restaurant that has to have outdoor seating, some of those things that, that is not just an end cap that's a, that has no, no connection to the, to the rest of the world. And, and since I forced that mark around it, or I recommended that, I said, okay, if you have outdoor seating, fine, you don't have to park that. Because we're asking you to do something to blend in, to have something where people can sit outside and eat an ice cream cone, or nachos, or something, and, and they'll have umbrellas, or a pergola, or something like that. Because I think that, and that helps in that scenario, that, that I'm not just some, you know, I've probably got a chain. I'm not saying a chain didn't do that, but, but that sort of situation. And I think there's, we talked about the number of rows of parking which you can have in front of the building.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Where's the signage going to go? Or is that the one right there?
Yes, there is.
And then, you know.
You'll see it in another slide. And, you know, not knowing what the regulations for a monument sign is, how big, or how tall, you know.
We did not change any of the sign laws.
What's that?
We did not suggest any changes in sign laws, so they're going to comply with that.
Right, right, and we'll comply.
And, and that, that really didn't tell it was an issue, but I'll tell you what, in the next week, I'll look and see, because maybe the sign, I hadn't really looked at the sign, right, since it's never come up. Maybe the sign regs aren't right, and then we need to say, hmm, that ain't a good sign for that, you know what I mean? And this gives you the opportunity to craft the rules. It may say a monument sign would be 20 feet tall, flat, or.
Right.
You know, if you're looking for a monument sign to have two or three names on it.
Exactly.
And then, yeah. So, but I'll look, that's, that's a good idea. Thank you, Rick, and I didn't even talk about the signs, but I really, to be honest, I haven't dealt with the sign regs.
Yeah, and we don't know to, you know, how close to the corner it's going to be, or, you know, and right now, I just kind of put it in the middle, you know, on the site. I think it has good visibility from, from 205.
And, and again, that if, if a development, detailed development plan comes to you, that's some of the things that you can look at and go, I don't think that sign's a problem. You know, those, those are the things that are under your purview to say, yeah, okay, the code says it can be 50 square feet. Fine, 50 square feet, but it's not right 50 there. It needs to be over here, you know, it doesn't need to be next to the intersection. Here's why. There's 10 regs there every week, and there's, yeah, you know, those.
Is there any requirement for there to be a rear egress from this long building? So people aren't wheeling the trash down the sidewalk where the people are, or there's more than one ingress-egress from a building?
Well, the size of the building would dictate fire code and those type of situations. Probably that building is, I don't know what's that, well, it may, it may, depending on the occupancy, right, they, you may have to add a back door, just not.
Right, right.
That door.
More for the, I need a back door because the size of the building and you can't be so far away from that.
Yeah. The second meaning of egress is based on the amount of square footage you have on, on these space. Right.
But, but that's, that's a good idea, because, you know, that, that's a.
And just for deliveries.
That's a double-edged kind of thing, though. At some point, the idea is the rear of the building should not be as rear of the building in that sense. It should be a, a four-sided building, if that makes sense. That if you just throw a door in the back, it doesn't look as four-sided as it would, you know what I mean?
That's true.
You can't just sort of go, oh, this looks great on the front, as in downtown, it's used to always be, and then the back would be an alley.
Right.
You know? Well, in this case, behind us is our houses. They're, they're a little bit away, but the idea is that it's in the code, and here too, it's like, you can't just throw all the stuff in the front and just.
Nickel back.
Just throw a huge lead back, sort of stuff. So it needs to be a four-sided architecture in that sense. That doesn't mean you can't put a door in a four-sided.
Right, right.
But you can't just sort of ignore, and that's just a big old concrete wall, all the back.
Right. And, you know, and we tend to penetrate that, that rear side only because, because of the easement and access through there, there's going to be cars going through there in future develop, development, so.
Yeah, that is a logical fact.
What's the use right behind this, the next parcel over? It's also, it's GB right now.
It's GB right behind it, and then if you go further back, it's AG, and then Brookshires is next door. And then there's more GB down towards. But see, that thing, if you look at that in, in our design standards, you have your.
Right. The articulation, the heights.
Of what, don't, don't look and say, well, you showed me that facade, this is kind of that. This is an example of how you break up a building that's 175 feet long, so it's that you have, it looks like, what you might think of Old Downtown in this scenario, you've got a building that's 50 feet wide, and a building that's 70 feet wide, and a building that's 30 feet wide. You're breaking it up with elevation changes, facade.
Materials, heights.
Which is, is, is not inexpensive, but it's not a terribly expensive way to break up that facade, as opposed to if you, if you divide it as two buildings, I now have eight exterior walls versus four exterior walls. And that's just got a, a lot more expense for, I got eight, a lot more places to leak water. I got a lot more places that get hot and cold and stuff. But this way, I've done the same sort of thing to break up the articulation without having to actually split the building.
Any, any proposition to expanding into, do you have a bar, any space, or do you want to go in there?
Well, if, let's say.
You have that elevation, hard response.
Well, you got all that. You, you, you pretty much always, it, it's said, you always solve for parking.
Yep.
Because parking is the big beast in, in all of this sort of stuff. But the other thing is, you have a concept plan that shows several buildings out there. You know, it, it shows 175 foot by 60, or whatever it is. Now, it can get smaller than that, you really can't move to the other side of the site, it can't go over here, it can't, your concept plan is established where the building is, the footprint that the building fits into, because it may be 175 feet wide, but you may only build 150, but you fit inside of it. You can't build 200 feet wide.
Right.
Because it, it doesn't fit inside the box. That's what the concept plan fits inside the box, and this is a development. That's a detailed development. And it would show, and in this case, I think, if, if it were someplace else in, in town, it may not, elevations may not be important, but, and I, and I like using the term gateway because it's so overused, but in this case, gases is the gateway, you know? You know, you, I'm not saying, now, there's a lot of town between here and there, but this is, this is the prom, this is the, it's the intersection.
Prominent quarter, yeah.
It is the intersection, so elevations in this scenario are very important. The developer's agreement with the stuff that you used to be able to do in the code is very important, because then you're setting those development standards for it. If you want it to look like an Old Town, then that's what it looks like. If you want it to look like self-ordered town, then that's, that's for the aesthetics y'all to figure out. And that's what a detailed development plan does, with elevations. You know, it's, it's to the staff and your discretion to decide if we need elevations or not. If it was just going to be a, a little office building that's like what Altima built down there, elevations may not be that important. It's, it's going to look like a house, okay? It's brick, and it's got a roof, and so, this is kind of important. You want to see what the elevations look. I want to see what the rear elevations are, probably more than the front elevations. Because the front, you're going to treat it right to get tenants to come in the rear, that's what everyone's going to have to look at. So, that's what I, me, y'all.
And is that, that's something that gets addressed in the detailed?
That's something. Now, again, again, if, you know, as I mentioned before, there's, there's two ways to do a PD. You can come in with a concept plan that they did, now they've added some more to it, and we can combine a little bit of that into that. Or you can come straight to this plan. You could go straight to this plan. If you, if you were there, and you knew you were going to build it, and, and the, the big, the big ask, as I see, the big ask for this whole request is that commercial development standards. The, not having the building, the building loaded into 80 feet. You're not asking for a whole lot of uses. Yeah, I, I recommend taking out the HUP required for a restaurant, because you're going to get a plan to look at, either a concept plan and/or a development plan. The uses, the, most of the uses that were restricted are things that, that they were going to have in the bottom body shots there.
No.
By plan, the bottom, bottom body shots. Is, the really, the change is that development standard of limiting the size of one building to 6,000 square feet and 80 feet of length. That's the real change in this PD, in size. Everything else we're adding to it. We're restricting uses. Brookshires restricted the most of the uses. We're, we're requiring all the, the architecture that's still in the code and everything. We've added some more requirements, so if there is a restaurant, we've added some more requirements, and I don't see a parking you can or can't have out front. Those are more restrictions than the GB is. The, their big ask is the, is that commercial development standard of, of 80 feet in length and runs a maximum of 6,000.
6,000 square feet.
Six thousand square feet.
It, it's, it's a lot less expensive, brutally honest about it.
Right.
There's no one going to lie about it. It's a lot less expensive to build that building than to 6,000 square feet of buildings. There's still 12,000 feet. The architecture would still be the same, you could just have a 10-foot gap in the hole, that would be an alley, the hole.
And just another question, just as it relates to development. So say it gets built, and say, hey, we like this building, it looks good, we like your final thing, and we like the articulation and all of, everything. And it gets built, what keeps it from being a blight like the harbor down in Rockwall that's half-empty? And so, from that standpoint, I'm interested in knowing the business plan of what's going to be in there. Because if, if we say, we want it to look like this, and it's so damn expensive, pardon my French, that nobody can afford to come in there and rent, then we've got a white elephant sitting on our corner.
Well, you know, I guess you've got about 10 different things out there. The uses, you can say, if you went to the use code and said, I don't want, and let's, I think I mentioned before, let's say nail salon was a use I don't think it is. I don't want nail salons, well, then you can scratch that out. Now, you can't say, I don't like this nail salon, or this that nail salon, any of that. Now, hardware viability, you know, I guess some of that's in your purview. If you make it so many bells and whistles that it's so expensive, then you've created your own situation in that sense. Now, you, you could look at it and say, I don't think, I think this is too big of a design. I think the city can't handle 12,000 square feet. That's, that's not a land use, that's an economic thing, it just, there's too much traffic, there's too much, there's, 12,000 square feet is not viable. It's too much coverage, all those things. Not because it's, it's because he's renting it for too much, or I think it's going to fail, it's just too big. You know, if someone came in for a mall, it's too big. You know, the code may allow it, but it's just too big. You could live it in, since, since a PD, you could live it and say, I, I think 12,000 square feet is too big. I think the most you can have for is 10,000 square feet. But you're not thinking what the uses are, you're not thinking on the viability, you're just saying, that's just too much for that corner. We, we think that corner should be X. And that's, that's, that's in your purview to say, it, there's too much, there's too much coverage, we need more room in space. That's, those are your decisions, Matt Kai, there's just too much. You can't say, I, I think his business plan is wrong, because it runs from the land.
Right.
The business plan for the land might be, is I think 12,000 is too much for the land. Just to me, you can't support 12,000 square feet.
Yeah, just trying to balance what we asked the developer for versus.
Well, yeah, no, that's, that's, you know, if you're like, again, if you're asking for, I want an oval blade and a blind, and says, well, then, he could put them in there, but he can't rent it for 15,000 square foot.
I think like we talked about last time, the, the, we will build it, they will come philosophy that was somewhat presented to us. There hasn't been an articulation and strategy as to how to attract tenants for this. No tenants have been identified for what we received last time you were here. Potentially that's changed since you're informed us again. And I feel like, to share this point, creating a structure where there is no infrastructure built behind it as to who is coming in, then we had a beautiful corner here, we want to support businesses coming into employmentism, but without the background as to how you're as to how you're going to support filling it, which we talked about last time. And again, it goes back, and I know I keep saying this, but this is the big word for me tonight, I guess, is the viability of this. Again, you're at 80% in one of your structures that you have, one of your buildings. The one that you've had in, um, is it Anna? That's been there since 2010? So, while it's at 100%, the last time I looked, it's been very volatile. So, you know, as far as you and your business strategy, I don't know what you're asking for rent. I don't know if you're asking too much, even if you have. And it's not.
You know, we're not in here, if you were to bring this up here next week, I think, you really can't talk about rental laws. You can't talk about-
I'm, I'm not what I'm asking is, what is the sustainability of, you're putting this building here. What I'm asking, I'm not asking who is charging. I'm saying, what are you going to do to ensure that it's cool? That's what I'm asking. I haven't heard anything about that.
Well, and to that point too, is, you know, this building may be perfectly nice, but there's a difference if four, um, insurance agents move in there, and they don't really have people coming and going. Or a Trader Joe's moves in there, obviously it's too small for that, and there's 1,000 people coming and going. So, part of it is, I mean, depending on who's going to be in there, if it's an office building where it's just the five people that work there, or if it's going to be a retail business that has good traffic flow, that's going to say something about what happens at that intersection. And it's also going to say something about what kind of sales tax comes into the city, which I would imagine is something that we're interested in as well. We can do that.
Yeah.
That's public hearing stuff?
It, it, is, is the use allowed?
Right.
Um, and if it produces sales tax or not, that's, I, you can't come out and say, I don't want to zone this because it doesn't raise enough sales tax.
Well, maybe that's the difference between an office and a retail.
Yeah, but an office is allowed today.
Right.
And retail is allowed today. So, so the decision would be, is, is there too much retail, or is there too much office? Is it too tall of retail? Is it too, you know, to start saying, I, I don't want offices to be here because they don't generate sales tax?
Well, no, that's, that's to my question. So, we know right now it's restaurant and retail, and it, and the uses can-
Well, restaurants not allowed today.
Right.
It requires, it should be today. Retail without the, let's, let's assume brokers isn't in there, because that's a whole different now. But retail is allowed. General business allows retail, allows office uses, allows lots of different uses. Allows automotive uses. It's, it's, it's the retail district for when it's, it's all without too much. And so, start saying, be selective based on, on other things. We have too many shoe repair licenses. Well, that's, that's a market.
Carl, it isn't about us being selective. We haven't heard any, any identification of the tenants that would be coming in. There's no, there, there's no desire here to be selective on the tenants. It's just, have tenants been identified? Do we have sustainability in these rental spaces that this developer is proposing? That, that to me seems like that. Would you have any questions?
Well, the general U.S. land-
Right. So, so, there's, there's sort of two things going on.
The tenant, you don't have a right sole on the site now.
There's, you know, is this use right for this piece of property? That's what we talk about. And then, is the community excited about who's coming? That's public hearing, city council, concerned citizens, and all that kind of thing. So, that's not something they would bring to us, because we're not the people who are going to decide on it.
They, they could bring it to you, obviously.
Yeah, but I mean-
I've got, I've got, I've talked to 10 different tenants, and these are the people.
But, but still-
Well, your decision should not be based on the 10 different tenants they talk to, because those 10 different tenants, if we, it takes two years to build this, they're gone in two years.
Right, and also-
I have Pier One coming in. Well, you know, five years ago, Pier One might have been, but, but a couple of days ago, Pier One is, you know-
Little stories, okay. So, just understanding what we are here for versus what the concerned citizens-
It's a little chicken and egg too, because they can't go and solicit for tenants and go out until they know what the use is allowed.
Right.
So, it's a little bit of, they kind of have to figure out what's allowed.
But we know, one of them, I asked previously the last time they were here, you know, of how, what is your strategy on building, you know, I, I got that at the start of the children, you know, whoever comes. So, there wasn't-
No, if I, if I'm, if I may, uh, we, uh, obviously, it's a retail center. Retail slash office, right? There are so many retail, uh, businesses, neighborhood businesses, I'd say that, you know, I think this town can use. Uh, and, you know, we, in, in our previous meeting, we have, uh, kind of mentioned, touched base on, for, per se, dry cleaners, drop stores, uh, nail salon, hair salon, restaurants. And those are the type of retail, donut shops. Those are the retail, uh, businesses that generally, you know, in a small shopping center, they normally go in. And, uh, being in our, uh, in, in retail, uh, we, uh, ourselves in retail business, we have experienced, and by looking at, uh, 205 traffic, we are very confident that we will be able to fill this shopping center sooner. Because there is so much traffic on, on 205, where a lot of eyeballs are going to be looking at this shopping center. And we've gone back and forth in terms of the drawings and, you know, uh, city has, uh, you know, have kind of given us the, uh, the impression that they, they want to have a, a, a good, uh, size of, not, not size of building, but, uh, uh, you know, good-looking building in terms of, you know, attractive building in, in the, in the intersection. And, you know, we've, we've gone back with Carl. Obviously, this intersection is, you know, a key intersection of the, of the city. And he wanted us to kind of present it, or, you know, bring us some, uh, nice design in order to attract, uh, you know, uh, you know, the, the tenants in this town. And so, this is, uh, now, you, you talked about, uh, you know, if there is any viable plan, or if there's any tenant backup. It's too early. It's too soon for us to have, go out and, you know, seek out tenants where we don't even know, you know, if it's going to get approved. Right? I mean, so, it is too soon for us to go out and, you know, uh, look, look for tenants. Now, once we see, and obviously, it's a simultaneous process, once we see that the, uh, the city is, uh, gearing towards approving this, on our back, backend channel, we're going to start, uh, approaching, uh, these, uh, brokers, uh, who, who will bring us, uh, tenants. So, there are, there are so many steps, uh, ahead of us for, for all that. Now, that's a business plan. You know, bring us, uh, bring the tenant to the shopping center. That's completely, has nothing to do with the, uh, you know, with the, with the building design or whatnot. It's a, it's a business plan that we intend to, to obviously, uh, put in a next gear once we see that, you know, this, uh, this plan that we have presented here is going to move forward with the, with the approval, uh, scenario. So, uh, you know, uh, we are, uh, very hopeful, and we, uh, by looking at the traffic here, uh, we, we're very confident that this, this shopping center will get filled pretty fast.
Traffic counts, uh-
We haven't, uh-
Uh, 18, 2018, uh, 17, 18, we look at it around, uh, over 11,000 car passway, uh, every day.
That's old census.
Yeah, old census. We, uh, we, we're pretty confident on this, uh, 13,000 square foot shopping center with the one, 2,000 to 2,500, uh, square foot restaurant will durable.
And I would guess it's going up. If that's two, two years old, it didn't happen.
Yes, no.
It's going up exponentially.
Well, when the construction starts, it'll, but it'll-
It's going up quickly.
Well, actually, it won't go down. It's getting slower.
So, I understand, to sort of recap what I've been hearing from what you're telling us, what our role is, is that our role is, is this use right for this corner?
This, this use, this design, this shape, this size, uh, is, is, you know, is this drawing, is this scenario right for this corner? With all the restrictions that are either on there or who wants it?
So, this would also be an opportunity for us to give feedback on the things we like, don't like about it, so that when they come back with their specific plan, it's more likely to be something that we say, we like it.
And emphasizing that, you know, it's already general business, so, um, the, the main difference is going to be the restaurant and the size of the building. Um, and then we have put additional restrictions over what's allowed in general business today. So, size of building, restaurant are the main.
And there may be, and you now have, you now, all houses are armed and dangerous with use charts. You may go, oh, you know, I don't think this use is the worst. I'm looking at it from my perspective, but again, I drive through the town. You live in the town, you might go, I don't know. I don't want the use might be, but some of the use, uh, we don't want a vet clinic in there because we don't want dogs parked in the town. I don't know. But, but this is the opportunity, because it's not general business. If, if those uses were allowed in general business, we could build a perfect. But now we have a chance, we can cater it down. I don't like vet clinics.
I, I don't like those title loan places. I don't like those payday loan places.
I mean-
I don't think they would work here anyway, but I don't, you know, something like that.
Yeah, and, and if it's, and I don't, payday loans are not good.
No.
A caution for your address.
Yeah, and, and if, and if you say, you know what, I didn't find payday loans there. We can define a payday loan. There's a lot of definitions out there. I don't think it's going to be there. But, but if this is your opportunity to go, I don't want payday loans. If they want payday loans, well, then that's what the city council decided, your idea and their one. But if, if there's some use that, you can't, you can't restrict certain banks. State doesn't allow use for pawn shops. You think you can restrict it, but you really can't restrict those as much as you could. You can here, but, but you can't just like, you can't require HSPs for pawn shops, because their lobbyists are pretty strong. That's what it comes down to.
If you didn't like the possible drive-through aspect of it, that's something that you could suggest to change. You know, we just only want sit-down, no drive-through, because we need what-
Or, or if it's, if it's a drive-through, you've got to go back, again, you know, you have to have an HSP for it, and then we can decide if it's appropriate or not. You know, that sort of stuff. This is your opportunity that you rarely get to write the rules you want.
I have a couple of questions. We talked before about, uh, you talked before about if we decided that 12,000 square feet wasn't the right number or whatever. Obviously, I don't think anybody sitting at this table knows the answer to that question. Has, I mean, I know Councilman Bloom has talked a lot about wanting to focus on economic development and doing it in the right place in the city. Have we talked about doing an economic development study and, because it's going to take an economic development study to know what the right square foot footage is for any corner in the city? And obviously, that's not going to happen overnight and by next week. And I don't, have you all done an economic development study? I mean, and I agree with you about the traffic on 205 and everything else, but-
Um, on the council agenda next week is a, a resolution for an economic development committee to become more formally structured.
Okay.
Um, part of their duties is, is that would be to develop an economic development plan.
Okay.
I don't know that specifically there's a study in there right now, but there are some things that they're supposed to accomplish as far as-
Sure.
Um, coming up with some kind of plan.
And I'm sure there are some rules and thumbs out there, and I'll be looking into them. And I work with a lot of economists, so, but, um, so, I mean, I'm sure there's some general rules and thumbs and stuff we can look at before next week. Uh, one of my other questions is, so the developer agreement that you said you're already working on in this case, is that something, and I'm asking more, Carl, from a, if we're, if we were to approve a, a PD for this lot, can the developer agreement be something that's part of, like, can we see it and it be part of what we approve, or does that have to be separate? Can it be, can it be a, um, one of the approve with, I can't remember what you said, approve with contingencies or approve with qualifications?
You know, I, I don't think it would be, um, you know, Lisa may be able to show, maybe not the elements, you know, the red act and stuff, but some of the things, and that's for-
Sure, that makes sense.
Um, you know, we could probably show you, it, it can't be tied to the subject.
No, I understand. I see, because it, because in my mind, there's two issues here. There's the use, which obviously, we can restrict as much as we want with general business or whatever. But there is also, I think, with this being such a hallmark corner for our city, I think a lot of people are concerned that it's not a metal building. And I don't think anybody's going to put up a metal building, but-
In general, we wouldn't be having these conversations.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I mean, I have a, I have a beautiful steel building in my backyard that's a garage, and it's awesome, but that's not what I want on this corner. And I know we can't restrict it, but if it can be part of the developer agreement, I guess I would feel better approving something at this corner if I had some-
It was 90% masonry, with only, the only metal allowed would be ornamental, this line, we had it written. Um, I don't think you can tie it to the zoning. And what you could do is, when it comes up for a vote for council, you can come up and do public comments and, and say, I don't like this part, I do like this part.
Sure.
If council considers that vote.
Yeah, okay. Um, and then my other question, I think, and this kind of goes back to, I think, uh, what Jody was asking before, but I, it's probably a little different, but, I know you guys, I mean, I understand where you're at with getting tenants and whatnot, but, so we approve the plan now, if we were to approve the plan, but is it safe to assume you're not going to actually start construction until you do start talking to tenants and you have, I mean, you're not going to build a building assuming it's going to stay empty. You're going to have tenants when you start construction. So, you're not going to build a building that's going to be empty when you finish. You're going to have tenants that are ready to move in when you start. So, um, that, I mean, that's what I was expecting you to agree with, okay? That's all I had for right now.
No, I like, this is, this is a way, this is good. This is good, and I'm sure it's good for y'all. Now, now, now you know what, we need to sort of beefing up some conversations to bring to you about some ideas of tenants and things like that. But it's, not the zoning issue, but if you can ask those questions, you just can't base on it from that. But it's, it's information that, that the public wants to know too. I don't think there's going to be 10 different nail salons. I don't know how important they are in the climate chism. Maybe there is a need for 10 different nail salons. I don't know. Some of them are going to give us wrecked nail salons for a cat. Okay, do y'all have anything else? Was there another? Whatever elevation, right? So, I was, today, what you're looking at is, is just using different, somewhat complementary architecture.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. With different heights, you know, you just want to, I just wanted to make them look individually. You know, sort of like what you see in, in a small town, Main Street, and you see all these, all these businesses, he's, you know, it, it looks like, like, it's, it is one building, basically. And, uh, but, but everybody has his own little character on it.
The bank versus the doctor versus the barber shop versus the-
Exactly.
How about that?
For what it's worth?
Well, I think, I think it's, it's-
I think we have a small tail field.
Again, it's, it's, it's in this book about saying, I don't want, I need the articulation. You can do it, Walmart articulation, which is-
Right.
Or you can do it like this. And, and, and I think actually I put in the PD that, that we, we've, uh, we will see elevations when we go to a detailed development plan. You, you don't make that choice. I took a punt. I'm choosing for you. I want to see some elevations. I don't care if brown brick or red brick as much as, we know that there's a change in materials. Something else will tell us what those materials are, but we know there's a change in material. We know there's something that looks like windows that, well, they aren't windows, we don't know that. But, and there's canopies, and then there's awnings and things like that, so, that's when we'll get into that, into those construction rules.
Right, right.
They may not be the top measures, but they're more construction.
Right. Yeah, and we do our construction documents based on a model. So, at any point, we could take a 3D shot of it, you know, while we're working on it.
And that also comes with, when you're in your tenant mix, you know that I need, I want to need 2, 3,000 square foot spaces, or I just need 1, 3,000 square, and then the size would match that. Of course.
Any further from the applicant?
I mean, if you have any questions, we can answer for it.
We don't have any more questions. How common are you that, I didn't expect to see, or look at this design, this plan come in front of us the next time. How common are you that it's going to take, we're reasonably close to something like this? Because you left us with some qualifiers, that kind of made me a little bit, and qualifiers always kind of talk about, obviously, we're going to do this as best as possible.
Right.
Maybe we can do this.
Right.
Maybe that, things could be a little more kind.
Yeah, I can't tell you that's going to be exactly the way it's going to be. The character of the, of the design, and that's what we're targeting, okay?
Exhude that.
Right.
The character, right.
And remember, those elevations will come back for-
Oh, yeah. This, I mean, this is our first stab, really, of what, you know, of what can be.[1740.83]
And believe me, from this process till, you know, two or three months from now, it's going to change a little bit. Widths, heights, uh, you know, now we've got to look at column spacings and, you know, what are column spacing going to be? That's going to determine, you know, sometimes that determines our, our lease spaces and things like that. So, but the character that we see here, that's basically the, the images that we want to portray on...
Plus, it's more into ball screens, or...
Right, right, no, no, yeah, it's going to be more like, like, like this, like, Motown look, you know, with different, you know, different sized windows and, and, you know, in, in storefronts and façades, uh, you know, some, some flat canopies, some, some sloped awnings and, you know, just different, different elements, uh, to the design.
I guess my question is sort of following on that, and then calling it right on the rule. Is what you've shown financially by, did you promise, the harbor issue or something, did you promise more than you think?
Right, well...
You might have more than you can share.
You know, keep...
The pictures are good, but if you can't afford the big pictures...
Yeah, it makes me sad every time I go to the harbor and it's half empty. It's great space, but they...
Great space.
Well, and I don't think that's because I over, I think that was...
There's probably a lot going on there, it's just, for whatever reason that's happening, it's not something I want to see happen.
Yeah, but best throw at the other end is the worst performing best throw shop on their whole system or something.
I'd like to hear the answer to this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's why we asked you all to be a little bit more considerate with us and cooperate with us in terms of, uh, you know, putting a plan together where, like you say, you know, uh, you, you know, you're not putting it, you know, too pretty where you, you will not be able to get the rent that you try to get your, uh, return on the investment. Uh, again, at the end of the day, it's, it's a business decision and, uh, we are, uh, putting the numbers together. Uh, obviously, we haven't sat, sat down and, you know, put, uh, you know, dot to dot. But then, at the end of the day, you know, initial process, this is what we, we want to show to you, present it to you. And then, uh, once we know that, you know, well, it's moving along, fine, we're going to put down and we're going to, we're going to make sure that, you know, it, it's viable for us. Because at the end of the day, you know, no business would want to go in, you know, having negative thoughts initially even going in. So we are very confident, you know, given the area, given the traffic, you know, surrounding homes, uh, you know, we, we're very confident that we will be able to, uh, get, uh, you know, the return on the investment. If it was a, a, a different town, somewhere in Dallas, you know, it, it would be, it would have been a, a different way of presenting it, right? Different way of building it. Because then, you know, depending on, you know, where you're building, uh, what, what range you're expecting. So those are the business decisions, obviously, that we have back in our head. And then that's why we have presented it in this way, that, you know, we're very confident that we will be able to get the, uh, uh, return on the investment, where, uh, and I see that, you know, you all been concerned about that, that, you know, property's been sitting there awakened and, uh, and now it's, it's a kind of a, you know, black spot on the town that, you know, you know, vacant property, nobody's, uh, it's just, you know, concrete and vacant property. We don't want to do that, obviously. Business people, uh, I mean, it's, it's against, uh, you know, it, it goes against the business, right? So, you know, uh, we, we're confident, and I could say that, you know, we're, we're putting the numbers together, but not to the, to the point where we know exactly what we're, what we're asking. But it's, like you said, it's a very initial process, it's initial stage, uh, in, in this process and, you know, uh, moving along, we will, we will have all those, uh, answers. And maybe next time, uh, we're, we're going to meet around, we will have, uh, you know, specific numbers for you all, that, you know, what we're looking, based on, you know, what we have presented here.
Yeah, I think, I think, and I'll speak for me, it, it's, it would be better for the city for it to be a vacant piece of property than a naked building.
Right, that's my concern.
So, you know, if you got in a half a building and it's a shell, that, that's worse than it not being, than being a vacant piece of property. Because now, the, the next guy then has to redo what you've done, and then it may not be viable to redo what you've done to do what he wants. So that's why I asked that question, don't, 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 don't blow smoke. And there's some other parts there that will...
So, and this, this may not fall underneath what we're supposed to consider, but, um, I'm working very closely with the Rockville County Chamber of Commerce, and we're very concerned for local business because of the construction that's about to happen on Third. The same thing is going to happen, it's going to be very, very hard on the mom and pop shops, okay? Big box is going to survive, they'll just budget downturns. So I'm curious about your timing of wanting to build it now when you know what's coming.
Yeah, you know, that, that, but that's in your purview, you can ask questions about timing and stuff.
So, um...
You, you can't, you couldn't put it in the PD and hold on to that, but that's legitimate question.
I, I'm just curious, because I know that's a real issue for mom and pop shops, which is what this is going to be, right?
Right, and, you know, uh, you know, I, I go back to the same, uh, you know, a little while ago. I, I told you all that, you know, based on our experience, you know, and she mentioned that she has probably searched our properties. Uh, we have three buildings that we own, uh, and two buildings a hundred percent occupied, one is eighty percent occupied. Eighty percent occupied just finished in September. And as we speak, I, I, we mentioned that, you know, there are a couple of viable tenants, uh, potential tenants. Then we're going through some of their, their financials right now. So, you know, with, with, with having that, uh, experience, uh, obviously, it helps us to navigate, to, to see. Uh, of course, nobody knows what, what the future, uh, uh, holds. If, you know, nobody knows that, but then, you know, we, we have hope. And, you know, we have, uh, experience in our, uh, disposal that we can, we can utilize that. Plus, we have, uh, you know, uh, great, uh, relations with, uh, a lot of brokers that we, you know, we, we, we use. Uh, and, you know, uh, we have talked to them about, you know, this particular project. We haven't gone in, uh, a whole lot of details. A couple of brokers that we have shown this property, they are very excited, uh, they are very, uh, energetic in terms of, you know, they can bring us some tenants, uh, in, 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 in that area. Because, you know, everybody loves the, uh, the way traffic flows on two oh five. Uh, and, you know, it connects, uh, a bunch of different towns. And, uh, you know, so tho- those are the, uh, uh, you know, are, are positive, uh, points on, on this piece of property. It's a corner lot, very good looking lot, plus, you know, they have, uh, uh, you know, approached us in terms of restaurants, and we are very excited to bring a restaurant in the town, a sitting restaurant. So all those combinations, I think, uh, that makes us, uh, more energetic. And we've gone back and forth, and we're very excited to come in this town and, and, you know, bring a good piece of development here in this, in, in, in this area.
You know, unfortunately for us, two oh five, with what's going on with the big container facility that's in Wiling and it's put there, so they're going to use two oh five as the connector because it connects, you know, it connects thirty, eighty, twenty. Uh, and now, Fornies just announced the, the...
Amazon.
Facility. That's a lot, more of those containers going that way, taking stuff to Amazon. Dude, how do you, um, you know, you're going to have a lot of trucks. Unfortunately, we're going to have a lot, okay? There's nothing we can do about that. How, how do you keep truck traffic from, I mean, I guess I'm just asking, do you control? I don't want a bunch of trucks on two oh five I got to drive around because I stopped to eat at a restaurant. You know, I mean, I don't know if, um...
Can I answer that? I mean, the way they park right now on the side of two oh five, they won't be able to do when they redo two oh five because it's going to be curbed and gutted. So that, like, right now where they pull off on the shoulder, they won't be able to when they reconstruct it. But I, I mean, otherwise, I mean, you're right though, because right now across from Sonic, they just pull over on the side of the road and, yeah. I don't know what they're going to do when they rebuild it.
Let me, let me look at that and, 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 if I can, there are ways to restrict truck parking. I'm not saying that they won't try to park.
They'll probably pull over and park on the side of five fifty, maybe.
Yeah, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that, but there are ways to restrict truck parking through zoning and stuff.
Yep.
Um, you know, you, with headache bars up there that don't allow people over a certain height to get in or something. Now, what the, maybe one of those situations, don't ask for something, you may get it, away from something, you may get it. So instead of pulling in the parking lot where there may not be a problem, then now two oh five or five, I think where there are a problem. I, I don't know, it's, it's a, you know, it's an unintended consequence. But, but I don't think they want big trucks hogging the...
No, no way, no.
Because it's something like you, it's something like you as, as somebody who's gone to shop there, you know...
Yeah, exactly, and, you know, this is, uh, understand this, you know, this is, uh, what we're trying to do here is, uh, bringing neighborhood businesses where people live in town will be, uh, will be using them. So we are not, you know, out there to, you know, bring those heavily, you know, like you said, big trucks and whatnot. And it's on our discretion, you know, we can, and I'm pretty sure you've seen, you know, signs in, in parking lots that, you know, you cannot park, no truck parking, and you're toe, toe away zone, and those are the things that, you know, uh, that you could do to, to eliminate that kind of problem. And I don't anticipate this, uh, you know, you, you may, you may have a legit concern, but I don't, I don't anticipate this is a, is a, is a big issue here.
We can, we can put some, you can figure out, you know, the development requiring, but headache, headache bars and something, you know, the headache stuff on the, on the driveways and leaves and...
And, and, and plus, you know, the, and, you know, the way, the way, you know, we have, uh, put the, the design together, look at the parking lot, I don't think there is, you know, for these big trucks can...
And, and, and please take this wrong, your client base are soccer moms and families, not, not... That's your client base, you're going to the soccer moms, dads, and, and, and families, so it's who you want, you're not a big boss. But that is a good idea, I mean, not a bad idea. It's not a little random, this way, it's on my list, I'm going to figure that out.
Just a reminder that there is a meeting next week, um, on the twenty-seventh, it's six thirty.
Uh, you know, for the business to come forward, uh, committee, uh, commission, uh, do I hear both with your...
I move, Lieutenant.
To a second. Or we can make it second, then you turn, and all of a sudden, say, I'm...
All right.
It's a year, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to see you currently, get a chance to say hello to all of you and find out how long you've been on those commissions.
I have to, I have to look that up. How long have I been on the commission?
I just started this call, so, yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to give some kind of business background. Um, yeah, it's kind of, the human resources is my background, but that, we, we open our...